...of protection under the Wetlands Protection Act. So they're not state-certified vernal pools at this point, what they're called potential vernal pools until someone chooses to apply to the state. And it's a sort of a lengthy process to do so. But what we've agreed to do is not go through the state process, but actually treat them as if they were vernal pools and provide them the protections that they would have under the act in any case. So what that did is that forced us to, like I say, pinch the whole site development together a bit, move a row of parking here and there, and swap out the building location for the maintenance shed versus the trash compartment, and pull the dog park in closer to the units as well. On top of that pinching horizontally, we've actually dropped the whole site by seven feet. So earlier discussions with the neighbors included heights of buildings. We're actually going to sink the whole project by about seven feet from the initial submittal. So that kind of comes in in the yellow areas on the plans that you guys have before you. The grading issues, the yellow part is formerly a very large retaining wall. We were able to do a one-to-one riprap slope in that location and end at the toe of the edge of the wetland and not impact that potential vernal pool. The other grading issue we did is we actually added a wall in a location south of, on the site. That retaining wall was not there. That was a fill of a wetland, not related to the vernal pool. But we decided to design a 10-foot-tall retaining wall so as to lessen the impact of that wetland area. So that highlights the pink and the yellow, so the grading and the structural items. The green items are the actual wetlands themselves that were identified by CEI and the impacts that we have on the property. In the upper right-hand corner of the plan is a table of impact. And not only did we capture this 27-acre piece, but the entire 45-acre piece, including the two industrial lots along Industrial Road. So the overall impact will be less than 5,000 square feet on the entire 45 acres, which is phenomenal for this type of size of a site. So we're going to keep under certain thresholds as we move forward with our permitting process through the state's DEP, the federal MIPA, and the 401 Army Corps of Engineers Water Quality Certificate. So previously, we had about 8,000 square feet of alteration, and now we're down to just over 4,000 square feet of alteration with all these grading and design changes. So those green areas highlight the areas that are going to be now filled and replicated on our part of the property. What we plan on doing at the direction, obviously, of CEI is knowing that this is step A in a process, there's still B, C, D, and E. As I say, these hydrology concerns are all vetted out through the Towns Conservation Commission, the state DEP, MIPA, and federal EPA.
Just so you'll know, when he mentions CEI, that is the company, when they do the permit process, they have to give us X amount of money. And that's money we use to hire our own peer review group. So we have our own engineers reviewing what's going on there, and they advise us. So when he mentions CEI, that's the people who are working for us, representing us, and working with them and coming back to us to tell us what they think about their plans. Thank you.
So picking up there, CEI also mentioned on the site walk that there's a portion of water that kind of runs behind Birch Hills Automotive on their property that, in advance of high water, that isolated potential vernal pool over tops and sort of runs down along the backside of their property. So what we've agreed to do, even though the problem exists on the back of their property, at the back of their parking lot, we've agreed to not, in effect, dam up the water and make it worse. We're actually providing a culvert to let the water traverse across the property underneath the roadway, which is something that we've agreed to do. So that's an orange. The other orange item refers to stormwater as well. The drainage basin that was out in the westerly part of the project was close to two of the potential vernal pools. And just again, in an effort to keep greater than 100 feet for any stormwater outfall, we moved the large drainage basin down in the location highlighted in orange on your plan. So I think that takes care of all my crayon work. The other item that we discussed is the intersection of Birch Street with Beaver Street. You have a handout in front of you today. At our technical review meeting last week, it was brought to our attention that, as the traffic report indicated, that we're responsible for doing mitigation, off-site mitigation along Birch Street at the Beaver Street intersection. And we are in the process of designing that with Ron Mueller. But we wanted to give you a handout, a plan to reference as you move forward with your decision-writing purposes. So I think in a nutshell, that's where we stand tonight. I do have three sets of full sheets for you tonight with a revision date of yesterday so that you can actually act on that with the plans for the Beaver Street-Birch Street intersection. I don't foresee many additional plans coming as we addressed all of Matt's concerns in a global sense at this stage of permitting and knowing that you will condition us to say that we all need future conservation permits through the state, through the town, through the federal permits.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, in terms of the plans, you know, as we talked during the work session, one goal is to have out of this a full set of what we'll call record plans.
Correct.
So you submitted plans at the beginning, which now have changes. And we have, are you at the point where you can have all the changes that we've talked about and that you talked about tonight? When do you think you'd like to be able to have a full set of record plans available?
I brought them with me tonight.
Good. So that has everything that's shown here on one set?
Correct. This is one sheet of the set, but the layout sheet references these.
But we'll have a full set or sets available then?
I have three tonight for you, sure.
Okay.
Just one other question, as I know we have the residents here. Can you just go over what you decided to do relative to the storage and that pump?
Oh, sure.
You know, because that's, as I mentioned, it was an area where it flooded sometimes. So I just thought maybe you could fill them in.
Absolutely, yeah. We met with the sewer department, and they indicated that with the additional 162 units that there's going to be about a 30,000-gallon delta that they need to mitigate, which Kevin has agreed to mitigate for, for the town of Milford, at that sewer pump station. There just doesn't, they don't have the volume capacity, the physical size, down there. So it's going to take a wet vault, if you will, of storage to provide to the town so that this will alleviate not only this project, but the current problem that they have there today. And that was vetted through the towns consultant, TATA and Howard Engineering. And they were the ones who told the town and us what this impact will have on that wetwell pump station.
Okay. Now I'm going to turn it over to the board members. I can start down with Tim. Any questions? Bob? John? Mark?
My answer last week.
Okay, all right. So you're all set?
My question to do it.
Okay. Jerry?
I'm set for now.
All right. I'm going to open it up to the audience, and please, all I would ask is you come up, tell us your name, grab the mic, and you can ask any questions if you'd like. You got the short straw, huh?
Lou Fortin, Two Lombardi Circle.
Hi, Lou.
A couple of questions. The lowering of the whole complex by seven feet, does that impact the trees that you're going to be planting along as a buffer?
Still going to screen the same way. We just load the roof of the buildings by seven feet.
Okay. Does that affect the lighting too?
The whole entire site is going by seven feet further away.
Okay. The pumping station, is that going to be enlarged for the sewer? Is that?
Yes.
Will that impact the, our property around that?
No. It's only going to affect that pump station location.
Okay.
Something that Mark felt was, our project does have an impact on, obviously, on sewer flow, but that pump station is currently failing terribly. It's way undersized currently, so that's one of the things that we're also fix.
Okay. All right.
If there's no other questions, yeah, come right up, sir.
My name is Chris Salto. I, we have a condo at 12 Stallbrook in the Birch Hill. And I have a few questions regarding the CEI report and others. One is regarding storm drains. And it's, my, their report said that the developer had not taken into account the effect on our Birch Hill condominium development. And we do have concerns regarding where the, I don't know what you call it, pond, river, whatever it is behind us affects it and also floods Birch Hill. So very concerned that the storm drain issues with this development do not further adversely impact our development. And...
Now, do you want your questions answered at each, or would you rather go through?
Sure, yeah.
Would you like to just stop here and see what they talk?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure, I'm not exactly sure which point of the letter that you mentioned, but that all of the stormwater management items that I discussed earlier have been addressed and will not adversely affect the stormwater runoff towards the Birch Hill condominium. Actually, the lowering of the site by seven feet actually helps that. We will self-contain all of our stormwater. We don't have any discharge heading towards the Stallbrook Road location. All of our stormwater discharges towards the southeast in this direction.
Okay. Yeah, I was referring to page nine, E4, where it said, "It appears the stormwater might drain from the north of the property," but was apparently not included in the calculations. Okay. One other, they do mention in the CEI report not wanting to give a certain waiver regarding drainage.
Stormwater bylaw.
Let's see, that was the, yeah, page eight, number nine. So I was wondering what the status of that was.
So you're talking about the waiver from the stormwater bylaw?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not going to be waived. The stormwater bylaw will remain in place.
Another concern we have, and I'm not sure it addresses here, is blasting. There's a lot of blasting going now. I'm not sure if it's on this site or next to it, but it's, it shakes the units a lot, rattles the windows a lot. It's very worrisome about the effect on the units. And so I don't know if it even started blasting on this exact site, which was, but we're concerned in the effect. And is there going to be some kind of study? And why hasn't there been one already to what the status of our units were before the blasting and then after?
Can I get some advice from either yourself?
I think you answered that one at the last meeting.
Right. Well, give them, explain.
Number one, no blasting has been done on our project at all. It's all in the actual location. It has to separate orders, separate application. It may be with our personal department.
Okay, I guess my question of why, will this development, whatever blasting they may do, will there be some study done? And...
Chief, can I grab you again? Kind of bring them through the process of how blasting occurs and what controls are put on by your department, because the fire department has control of that.
Hold it. Here, just take this one. Yeah, they haven't, they're blasting up the far end of the site. It's not in part of this development. Everything is governed by the state. Everything has been well within the limits set by the state. There's a firefighter present for every blast, and there is throughout town at every site we have. Once they get into this site, if they were within 250 feet of the dwellings, they are required to do a pre-blast survey of your home. Outside of that, they're not required to. I know there has been a seismograph. I don't know at which number on Lombardi Circle, but for every ongoing blast now, there is a seismograph on Lombardi Circle. And the limits are, it catches you by surprise, because it catches us by surprise over at the fire station too, because we're feeling it the same way. But the limits, the seismic limits are well within reason. It's more of a, you sense it because it surprises you, but it's really not shaking to the extent that you think it is, according to the seismographs.
Well, we've had some that we don't feel that much, surprises us because we weren't expecting it, but others that really rattled.
Yeah, and the problem is the blasting is being done so far away from you that we can't hear the warning horns. We can't hear them at the fire station either. But it's just because they're so far away and it's, and the shock travels through the rock, and it catches us by surprise.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that we did discuss at the last meeting, and I will absolutely follow through with that, is to try to eliminate some of the surprise of when it happens. We are going to work with whatever blasting company we end up going with to try to come up with a consistent time of day when the blast happens and we'll obviously let you know what that is. I certainly can't say that today, it's maybe the morning or the afternoon. But hopefully that would help at least give us some consistency to, if it happens.
Then I indicated at the last time, the last meeting we had, that you'd be open to inspecting all the units beforehand.
I definitely want to do what we feel like we need to do. I'm going to be careful as to, I think what the chief just talked about, putting the seismic thing on the road. We definitely have talked to our site contractors about doing that as one of the things to make sure we can monitor what is happening in the neighborhoods around us. Certainly anybody within 250 is going to be taken care of. And I'm actually relatively good friends with the company that does the inspections. So I have been talking to them about trying to figure out a global plan for the whole project.
Okay, I think most people would be happy to get their buildings looked at beforehand. What falls within the 250 feet from where you were doing the blasting?
Every location is different, obviously, depending on where you cut. We haven't gotten there exactly, but 250 feet, to give you a distance, generally be the buildings that fall on the south side of Stallbrook and Lombardi.
Oh, so that really will be on that?
And again, the worst-case scenario would be a little bit beyond. I would say all the units shown here, in the worst-case scenario, would be under the 250.
Now, can I just maybe, is that 250 from you and the two people from the other new area with that last?
No, to where the blast is about to occur. So that 250 radius is going to move depending on where they need to blast on the site.
From the blast site?
From the blast site itself.
All right, I'm sorry. I guess we'll get there to decide what blast. I've seen them, but I don't know the ones on like that actual stuff.
Sure.
Because like Chris probably did, and then really set it down to some people, I'm just getting, I'm just curious when we talk about 250 feet, not the blast site, it's just a project on the way from.
I see, I see.
I'm wondering, is the way from my building is 250 feet or 250 feet from the line? Like, so walls? So you got line up there behind you, it's like a pale? Are you really trying to back that to actually walk a pale?
Yeah, correct.
There's a stone wall around it, there'd be others.
Yep, that would like a touch.
Is that why it's up the stone wall?
Exactly right, yep. That would like a touch.
So that if you try 250 feet from the stone wall away from us, or try 250 feet from our, from you?
From the building to building.
Okay. But that's, is that a little cap ax? That way behind the blast site, behind the, furthest north, cap, you don't think that's this?
This here?
Yeah, is that like a cap?
It's a, exactly, it's a garage.
It'll just be a low one level.
Correct, perfect. Yep.
Quick question for you.
That roof line would probably be about 10 feet lower than the stone wall.
10 feet lower than the stone wall? 10 feet higher than the stone wall?
Stories about that. So that building?
I don't mean like how many, or to have something, whatever down, but it's restored to the roof.
It's restored, that's correct. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they were, we have an extensive landscape design, but that focuses on all of the areas between.
Looking at building number three, going straight across to Stallbrook Road. Come, go right to the middle of the building, go straight across to the condos at Stallbrook. How far is that distance from the blast site to the end, to the furthest part, which will be the back area of that condo?
I want to give you a good number.
That would help. That appears to be the closest building to the blast sites for the actual construction. You see what I'm looking at right here? From right here to right here.
From the garage?
Well, it'd be the garage, wherever you're blasting to the...
And again, we don't know if we have to blast there yet?
Well, that's going to be assumption you do.
Okay.
That's about 275 feet.
So it's just over the 250. And that would be if you have to blast for that garage.
Correct. We're out there now, chipping away with excavators. Some of it's loose rock.
I know, I know. But it's better to say we didn't have to rather than, well, you know, I guess we should have mentioned it.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think one more area, and I apologize. I know there've been other hearings. We don't live here full-time, but it's home to us, and so I missed, I wasn't in town for the other meetings. The other item that concerns us and talking to others is traffic. I know there's been talk at Birch and Beaver of maybe adding a right-turn lane, which would be great, because so many people do cut, turn right to cut through the residential areas to get to Milford. And that would make it easier to go left back down Beaver towards 109. But I think there will be a significant increase in the traffic impact on those residential And also, I understand there's talk about widening Beaver to 109, so there'll be two lanes all the way to 109, which would help get traffic out of there. There's, it's bad enough as it is now. So that's our concern, is traffic is, have big issues now, and we're worried about if there's 162 units, that's 200 cars, and the apartments, significant effect there, plus the impact right now on 109. Trying to make a, it's virtually impossible to make a left-hand turn from 109 onto Beaver. And though it might be nice where we have our left-turn arrow turning from 109 onto Birch, maybe one of those on 109 turning left onto Beaver would be a good idea.
You can't turn left on Beaver?
109, 109, no, 109 coming towards the 495, making a left.
Are you talking about where McDonald's is at that intersection right there, where you want to?
Where you turn up to stop and?
Yeah, now, maybe I'm mistaken. I think they're looking at that left-hand turn signal. Did I hear something?
We're doing the left-hand turn signal that goes from 109 onto Birch.
Okay, okay.
Well, that already has a left turn, left turn arrow. They give you that, yeah. And so that helps traffic 109. But going the other way towards 495, when you get to Beaver, to turn up, it's, you're lucky to get two cars turning, turning left there. And I know it's prob, it's not probably relevant to this development, though this development will impact that. But that would help if that were done. So I don't know if there's thoughts of any lights on Birch to help adjust the traffic or not, but there's, we have concerns about that.
Like leaving out our concrete complex, that's awful right now. People, it's going to be the story in the morning, during the day, it's going to be bad.
If I may, last...
Take account of the actual condo, turn on Beaver, to take a left to 109.
At our last meeting, we spoke quite a bit about the traffic coming onto 109, Birch, Beaver Street, et cetera, et cetera. And the contractor has agreed to do constant studies about the timing, because it's not a state road, so we have some jurisdiction over what we can do with that road regarding timing the light a little better, maybe delaying, you know, coming up. Because we're figuring mornings, you're going to have about 100, 150 cars coming in there, you know, hitting 109 or Beaver, either way. But doing more of a study, okay, how much longer do we have to delay the light on 109 to allow Birch Street to unload onto 109, and vice versa, taking the left turn, taking the right turn, et cetera. And he's agreed to do all those studies to do what, even after, if this is permitted and it's built, even after, is an ongoing constant watch. Okay, all of a sudden, you guys say, "We're backed up 10 minutes each morning." We don't have 10 minutes. Well, it might be three, four, five minutes down the road. He's willing to, and that will be one of the things we'll put a stipulation on, we hope, to say, "You've got to constantly watch and monitor this." And he's agreed to do that. Am I not correct in that, Mr. Lobster?
I just, last question about that. It's when you're coming, like, say, through a big line that's coming down, or yourself, there's some, that right, you'll write on red there onto Birch Street. I notice a lot of traffic that's coming down the street, coming in that direction to Birch Street, direction. A lot of, mostly a right, I'm going to put it in that.
Yeah.
But that is more concerning. But that right is able to maybe stop and, not while we're right on red there. So that when the number to the line is longer, we don't have people taking a right on red as that lane will fill up at all those office buildings. But that's, usually it's that side that I have the toughest time.
Well, these will be all things where the traffic study's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a process. 109, 109 is a mess from Milford all the way through Midway, no matter which way you look at it. They've been working in Midway for the last, since I got my license 40 years ago. So, I mean, but the bottom, well, the thing is, you know, it's not a state-owned road, so the towns, you know, the town can do different things if necessary. He's willing to work with the town and the Milford Police Department, et cetera. And again, it's going to be a process. If he finds, right out of the gate, everything's working fine. If it's not working fine, then the adjustal aspects of it are there, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Yeah, sure, come on up. Yeah, come on down. Well, no, I'm not like him. I'm not going to sell you a car.
All righty. Speak directly into the mic. My name is Frank Abashan. I live at 41 Stallbrook. I'm probably the furthest unit away. But I am curious if you could confirm that since you're dropping this whole thing seven feet, what would my fellow neighbors in these buildings actually see when they look out their bedroom windows?
Sure, sure. So as you know, when you pull in Stallbrook Road, there is quite an elevation change up to Lombardi Circle being the highest. So it's difficult to tell exactly everybody's window elevation. But what I can tell you is that we just put the building down at a rate, I'm going to say 300, roughly 300, and then 45, you have a best 345. That's the ridge of the building, 345. And we do know that the average rate among some walls is probably 325. So that, from that stone wall down to Stallbrook, probably across anywhere from 5 feet, the highest point is 25, 30 feet down to this location here. So basically, what we can tell you is if you go to the stone wall and look across the working area, you're probably going to be looking up about 20 feet from where you're standing. And that's typically the top of the grid.
If there is no more questions, what we're, I have talked with our FODB coordinator. What we're going to do is we're going to try to schedule one more public meeting. And that meeting could be the final meeting, okay? And the reason for that is they have very well, and have a lot of initiative, have given us final plans. We're going to...
us final plans, we're going to give them to CEI, dot all the i's, cross all the t's, and make sure that everything is set up, and at the same time, there will be conditions on everything that is being dealt with. So at this point, we'll see if we can set up a meeting, so you'll know when that is, and if it's going to be okay with your group. What are you looking at, Jerry?
Well, you have the plans here, ready, three sets, right? Can you hand those to us tomorrow electronically, so I can put them up on the town website, and so the folks can see them, and I can get them to CEI electronically? That would be great.
Absolutely.
So they can do a quick review. Charlie, as to your question, I mean, we have the Stone Ridge at 6:00 on the 27th, which is next week.
Yeah.
We could pick this up at 7:00, we're doing both, hopefully, downstairs, room three, we can, if that works.
What day is that?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. Because as we, as we all know, we're getting to July and vacation, and everybody's worked hard, the committee, the applicants, so we want to, and we want to make sure that we've got everything straight, but that looks like a possible good date to, and we can not only close it, then we might even vote on it at that meeting, dependent on, if we're ready.
You may not have, you may need one meeting after that, because you may not have everything on paper ready, but...
There's a shot.
Close the public hearing and begin to deliberate that night is what I think you're going to be able to do.
Okay. And when he says that we're going to, at that meeting, we will close the public meeting, now, we've done this on the others, too. What this, that means is, that will be your last meeting where you can get up and ask questions, okay? We will then schedule another meeting, it will be a meeting open to anyone, but it'll just be a meeting of this board, and nobody can add to that, but they can, more than happy, listen to everything that's being said, okay?
And again, hopefully, the new, full plans will be up on the town's website in the next day or two, so keep taking a look at the revisions compared to the original.
Do I have a motion to close the meeting and to move it on to the next?
7:00, room three, 27.
Tim? Second. All those in favor? All right. Well, thank you very much for your participation, I hope you got some of the answers you were looking for, okay?